2021, and begin with board member introductions. So I will introduce myself. I'm Langdon Plummer, and I'm Chair of the Board. And Pete, would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Pete Cameron-Plerk.
John?
John Gertu.
Glenn?
Glenn. Better from my side.
You're regular.
I'm trying to think who.
Quinn English, regular member.
Molly Cowan, Select Board Rep.
And Nancy Belanger, Alternate.
Okay, Nancy. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda are to approve some minutes we have. In order of dates, so October 28th. At our last meeting, we chose not to. We chose to table that because we had a majority, but we didn't want to get involved with minutes. So if you take a look at those and... Any comments?
I had a comment.
Okay.
But let's go ahead and take the... Well, if I recall, I recused myself for the PSNH for the...
You did.
Yes, you did.
It's in here.
It's there, but did I ever come back?
You're here now.
No, 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 no. But I was sitting here.
I don't know.
And I thought at the end of that PSNH presentation, I was going to come back. But I see Mark stayed on, so I guess I was recused for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, but I guess that's what you did.
Maybe I'm wrong.
I don't think it makes a lot of difference.
I thought you came back.
But I was sitting here, and that's...
But we really didn't have anything we voted on after.
Well, they didn't have anything to say, apparently.
They could go home.
The other time, yeah.
But you were down there in Section 6, 7.
Yeah, technically, Dieter did motion to adjourn, and maybe that was out of order, but we'll let that one go.
Well, that's what caught my eye.
Yeah, that's probably... Well, yeah, so... But you adjourned.
Okay.
I mean, he did make the motion.
And I don't have a copy. Was that the last thing on the agenda that we talked about that night?
Yes.
So Pete wouldn't have been back on, probably because that was it.
Well, no, but I only recused myself for a specific matter.
Yes.
Right, but that was the last matter we talked about that night?
No.
Okay, that's what...
Last application.
The town planner.
Okay, sorry. That's where I was going with that. I don't have... I didn't put them in the right place.
All right, forget it.
We're good.
We're good.
That's good.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Voice vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain? Uh, no. Okay, one abstention. They stand approved. Now, the next minute, there was a majority... Not majority, yeah, we had a quorum of the Board, but it's only four people, so I would ask that the four people in attendance be the ones to take action on these minutes. So these are November 18th, and I think that probably Daniel spent a little more time on these minutes than the meeting took, but...
I'll motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2021.
I'll second.
John seconded, thank you. Discussion? Those four in favor, list it with hands, just so we... One, two, three, four. Okay, no opposition, so they stand approved.
We have to abstain.
Well, I was saying, just those members that were here.
All right, but you're asking for a vote on it by the full Board now.
No, I was asking the four in attendance to vote.
All right, sorry.
It's all right. Good question.
Now I'm old to...
Devils and weep. All right. Next, we are going to... I'm going to make a little tweak in the agenda. We have gentlemen here from Exter Station Properties requesting an extension for conditional approval, and we're going to... So I want to take care of that first. So Dave, do you have any comments on that?
I do. Just wanted to point you in your packets. There was a letter from Sharon Cuddy Summers at Donahue Tucker in Chindela dated November 22nd, 2021, outlining the reasons for the extension. And it would be... They're asking for a one-year extension. And they are here. I did tell them, you know, since I think this is their third extension request, which would be till December 6th, 2022. It's their third one. I said sometimes the Planning Board will have questions of the applicant, so there's a representative applicant here in the event the Board has any questions. As you will note in the letter, there wasn't any significant changes that would add to this site plan regulations or subdivision regulations that would affect this application. So if they did, you know, say you said, oh, okay, return, it would be under the same set of regulations that they went through in 2018.
Okay. Board have any questions?
I have a question. Does the... So the letter explains how some of the soils are contaminated, and if any remediation of those soils would take place, does that change the site plan application? And then would they come back to the Planning Board to have those changes be reviewed?
I don't believe so, unless they were changing any of the, you know, moving the parking lot, or, you know, the contamin... The remedy, if you will, changed something enough to trigger further review, but if it was just, okay, we're going to follow the DES requirements and, you know, do this, and this is the remedy, but the site plan is not going to be changed, material changed, then no, they wouldn't be come back.
So it's part of site preparation, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to result in some change to the plan to trigger, you know, further Planning Board review.
Any other questions?
No, I did. I just... I'm just wondering what the level of action is. Is this... Does this put it in like a brownfield site category, or...
You can look at the microphone, please, so everybody can hear. Thank you. David Cowie, one of the owners of Exter Station Properties. So it is a typical brownfield site. So essentially, whatever we remove from the site can be reused on the site, but if it has to go offsite, it has to go off as a special waste. And we just discovered a small pocket of cadmium contamination in the groundwater, which is a bit of a surprise, so we're waiting to hear back from the DES on that. It's a small pocket, and it's not that extensive, but it still needs to be addressed by the DES.
Is this something that's common when you're next to a railroad? I don't know anything about this, but I was as surprised, probably, as you were when you found out that this was here.
We suspect that the soil contamination probably came from an offsite source where they brought the material in, because if you're at this site, you still see the railroad tracks are still there, so they filled up to the railroad tracks. It's probably the soil they brought in from wherever it was.
Hmm, that's unfortunate. All right.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you for doing due diligence on that. Anyone care to make a motion? Or do we have another question or two?
Excuse me, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
Although, do we have some magic words that we normally use for this type of motion?
No, just I moved to... Well, what are you... Are you looking to approve the request?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you looking to approve the request?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just move to approve the extension request until December 6th, January... Uh, December 6th, 2022. Yep, uh, I'm sorry, let me... The request for an extension for Exter Properties LLC to December 6th, 2022. PB Case 1811, if you want to add that.
That sounds fine.
You can just so move then.
Board's right out of here, ma.
There are magic words.
Okay, do we have a second?
Go second.
John, John seconded. Any other discussion? Let's do a hand vote on this, please, so start on the end. Nancy, you're not voting.
I'm the voting member tonight.
Just checking, don't you know you're there, and I'm watching you. So Molly?
Yes.
And Gwen?
Yes.
Yes? Pete?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Approved.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Go ahead. Second.
Okay, continued from the next slide. And put a public hearing on the application of ZV Investments LLC for multifamily site plan review of a proposed conversion of structures located at 50 Newfields Road on four residential... Into four residential condominium units. Public properties located in the URU Rural Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel 53-9, and is planning based on the Board's case 21-10. And Dave, do you have something to start with on this one?
Sure, thank you. The applicant, as you said, is seeking approval for a multifamily site plan for the proposed conversion of some structures that is a single-family home and a, I don't know, another building, if you will, located at 50 Newfields Road into four residential condominium units. They are going to revamp the existing single-family home, and that would be one of the units, and then they are raising the building that was there and rebuilding three condominium units, as shown on the site plan. The Planning Board did do a site walk, but it wasn't ever official, because only three members showed up, so there wasn't a quorum, so it technically wasn't a meeting. But you did walk, you know, I think the Chair, the Vice Chair, and Nancy Belanger were present for that walk. The applicant submitted revised site plan and supporting documents that were dated November 15th, which were not distributed to the Board at that time due to the delayed submission. However, they were included in the mailing. There was, at that time, they had not addressed the DPDW's comments. There were still outstanding concerns regarding the DOT driveway permit and over concern of whether a Phase 1 environmental review should be conducted, given the conversion to residential use. The applicant was contacted and subsequently requested continuance, and the applicant has submitted another revised site plan and supporting documents dated November 30th, and they're also enclosed. There are no waivers requested for this application. And one thing worth, you know, the Board to leave it up to the Board, because the applicant asked me about the purview of the Board to require an environmental, you know, Phase 1 assessment of the property. And I said, you know, that would be up for the Board to decide whether they, you know, wanted to say that, wanted to request that. Jen Mates did note it, who no longer works for the town. She departed several weeks ago, but I did talk to her about the, you know, about the request and what she was looking for, because she just kind of questioned it in her letter, was there one done? But she was, you know, looking for that information, because the history, it was, among other commercial uses, there was a dry cleaner at that site. So she, you know, wanted to make sure it had, you know, recommended to the Board, but, you know, up to the Board to discuss and determine if, you know, you would like that information, you know, to continue on Jen Mates' request. I also, in talking with the applicant, because, you know, they can speak for themselves on that, but they, you know, they questioned whether it was under the purview of the Board to request. I did talk to Walter Mitchell, our Town Council today, and if you get to that point and you want that, I could, you know, I would recommend you go into non-public session, and I can provide that legal opinion to you. And I do have, you know, in case the Board gets there, I did say in my memo, I'd be prepared with suggested conditions of approval. I have those, you know, depending on whatever, however direction the Board goes, I'm prepared. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. As Dave said, since the last meeting, we did complete a site walk with the Board. We have revised the plans to respond to the comments received from both the Board and the town engineer, the highlights of which are, we did file for a DOT driveway permit. We haven't received that back yet, but we have filed for the requested one. We have depicted the new septic system that will treat all four units, and we show all the piping and tanks for that as well on the plans. We do show a new well with piping that will supply all four units. In addition, we added notes regarding the potential hardscaping in the limited common areas, and we added the call out for the proposed fence on the south side of the lot. And with that, be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Okay, questions? From the Board.
I have a question.
Yes.
First, let me just caveat, I don't know if the Board's aware, but I have been out of the office on Federal Medical Leave Act for a while, so I just got up to speed on this today. So I'm sorry, you know, I should maybe, I just want to precursor to that, because I have some questions that, you know, because I just kind of got, trying to get up to speed. Was this of the applicant? The water, that wasn't on the prior plans, right? It was using the existing well?
Correct.
Okay.
Because originally, when this was submitted, there was no CUP, but then there was a... We saw that there was a septic system that was installed. That's what we thought at the thing. We talked about this at the site walk, and the area was disturbed before the current owner got it. And so we're like, okay, you need an after-the-fact CUP, because you put it in within the last few, you know, like, within the last year, and that should have triggered a conditional use permit, because it is in the wetland buffer. But then, they found out that it never got installed. It got designed. There was some disturbance of the earth. We don't know why or why they did it, but it was disturbed in that area, but that's water under the bridge, in our opinion, because it, you know, it was in an already disturbed area. We saw it on the site walk. But now I question if... Now you are digging in the buffer for the water line.
I believe that. Isn't the well and water apparatus exempt from that?
Yeah, I don't know. That's I'm just...
I'm fairly certain I looked that up.
Because I just want... I'll research that, like, to see if, you know, because we didn't ever talk to Kristen or anything about the applicability of a CUP now with this, or did you ever have that conversation with her?
We did discuss it after the septic issue, but I didn't... Wasn't specific to the well, you know, itself.
All right, all right. So that's all I have, that question. I'll do that research to see.
My mind was back to the site walk time, but that explains why there's a completely new septic.
Yeah, I mean, we first brought it before you. Our intent was to utilize the septic system, when we believed was installed in January, and then an additional septic system. Now we found out that was never installed, so we are installing a new one, which is a little higher and on the north side, northeast side of the lot.
Dave, a question to you, or either of you. The plan is to, as I understand, abandon the existing system that needs to be changed anyway, but is there any concern in terms of soil? I mean, is it within the circle of the well? I think...
It is.
It is, but so is that endanger that proposed water supply, well, new well? I don't know.
You're talking about the contaminated soil?
Yes.
Your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my concern as well. Where would the dry cleaner located?
Ah, okay.
In relation to the well.
It was in the three buildings, by my understanding, where the three units are being proposed.
So it was in that existing building?
It was in that existing building, the larger one, not the single-family home.
No.
There's Unit 1, which is the existing single-family home, and then the three units proposed, it's a... Does it have an attic in there? I mean, it's kind of a one-story building.
Well, yeah, but they're... He's raising it up a story.
No, I understood. I'm saying the existing building is where the dry cleaner was. It's like a story.
And I'm not... I'm not certain if it was just the storefront for a dry cleaner, because there's a lot of those.
Or was it actually...
Or was it dry cleaning, right? And the applicant doesn't know the answer to that, but there is no evidence of it being the... Where the dry cleaning was completed currently.
Yeah, we don't know.
Where is the historical society when you...
But that's something that a Phase 1A would determine, would research and find out, right? Like, what the actual...
Potentially.
It would determine... Yeah, usually does a level of detailed research to determine if further investigation is warranted. So it's kind of the first step, and then if it's...
Okay.
If they find something that they feel is valid, they'll, you know, recommend a Phase 2 and go deeper, you know? Kind of just the initial stage.
Oh, okay, all right.
It seems like a strange place that it would have been a retail store that I stopped by and drop off a dry cleaner. It looks probably like the place they brought all the places to be cleaned, you know?
Yeah, we don't know. I mean, we don't believe it was the actual dry cleaner, but we can't answer that.
And how come we don't know... How did you... Someone not know that the leach field wasn't installed just a year ago?
The reason we thought it was installed was because we found a new design approval for the septic system on the DES website. And we went out there and looked, and you can see disturbance in the area where it was approved to be installed.
We said, oh, here it is, right here, yeah, on the sidewalk.
So one and one, in this case, didn't add up to two. The... We went back and we're trying to find the operational approval at DES, weren't able to find that, which made us call the design... Their septic designer, and he said, no, 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 it was never installed. It was designed, never got installed.
Yeah, I mean, the land was disturbed too, in that area, but...
Yeah, it was.
That's weird.
Because we also walked where another second field was proposed. It was going to be proposed at that time.
Yeah, there was a second field.
They probably dug some test pits, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, that... It looked a little bit more disturbed than test pits, but, I mean...
It was a 40 by about 30 area which disturbed. It was, you know, test pits are usually, you know, guy or not, you know, like, and round.
Right.
Not usually a big rectangle, so... But we don't know, you know, the current owner was not involved, and we don't know what happened. The vegetation, you know, grown in long enough to, you know, it was before they purchased the property.
So I understand now, too, that the proposal is to, rather than flipping the large building, it'll be removed and all-new construction for those three units?
I'm not sure I heard that right, but we're installing a new septic system for all four units.
Yes.
Yes, and a new well for all four units.
I'm talking about the... I was shifting gears on you. Units 2, 3, and 4 are going to be all-new construction?
They're going to be in the footprint of the building that is there currently.
Yes, yes.
We're just... We're going to take it up another story.
Yeah, okay.
So it's... You're adding a second story, or is it an all-new building?
No, adding a second story.
So it's not an all-new building?
So the buildings are going to remain, basically, but a second story is going to...
Correct.
Oh, okay. All right, that's what I understood before. Yeah, all right, yep.
Last time we looked at this plan, we had asked about what was happening in the limited common area for units 2, 3, and 4, those fenced-in yards. Is that... Has that been determined? Is it going to be grass?
So he has no intent to do anything for it, you know, prior to selling it or somebody renting it. But we did add note number 15 that indicates the maximum hardscaping, that if they decide to go with hardscaping, that could be in that area, which would be 400 square feet.
Okay.
We also indicate that, you know, 4 has to be limited to porous applications as well, so... Because they are in the buffer.
Thank you. I had one other question about the limit of grading for the proposed septic leach field. It looks like the grading contour... The new contours are within 5... why there's a completely new septic.
Yeah, I mean, we first brought it before you, our intent was to utilize the septic system, we believed was installed in January, and then an additional septic system. Now we found out that was never installed, so we are installing a new one, which is a little higher and, and on the north side, northeast side of the lot.
Dave, a special question to you, or either of you. The plan is to, as I understand, abandon the existing system that needs to be changed anyway, but is there any concern in terms of soil? I mean, is it within the circle of the well? I think.
It is, it's not within-
It is, but so is that endanger that proposed water supply, well, new well? I don't know.
You're talking about the contaminated soil?
Yes.
Your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my concern as well.
For the contaminated, uh-
Where would the dry cleaner located?
Ah, okay.
In relation to the well?
It was in the three buildings, by my understanding. The, where the three units are being proposed?
So it was in that existing building?
It was in that existing building, the, the larger one, not the single family home.
No.
There's unit one, which is the existing single family home, and then the three units proposed, it's a, does it have an attic in there? I mean, it's kind of a one-story building.
Well, yeah, but they're, he's raising it up a story.
No, I understood, I'm saying the existing building is where the dry cleaner was, it's like, it's like a story.
And I'm not, I'm not certain if it was just the storefront for a dry cleaner, because there's a lot of those.
That's what I'm wondering, or was it actually-
Or was it dry cleaning, right? And the applicant doesn't know the answer to that, but there is no evidence of it being the, where the dry cleaning was completed currently.
Yeah, we don't know.
Where is the historical society when you-
But that's something that a Phase 1A would determine, would research and find out, right? Like what the actual-
Potentially.
It would determine, yeah, usually does a, a level of detailed research to determine if further investigation is warranted. So it's kind of the first step, and then if it's-
Okay.
If they find something that they feel is valid, they'll, you know, recommend a Phase 2, and go deeper, you know? Kind of just the initial stage.
Oh, okay, all right.
It seems like a strange place that it would have been a retail store that I'd stop by and drop off a dry cleaner, it looks probably like the place they brought all the places to be cleaned, you know?
Yeah, we don't know, I mean-
Don't know.
We don't believe it was the, the actual dry cleaner, but we can't answer that.
And how come we don't know, how did you, someone not know that the leach field wasn't installed just a year ago?
The-
Eleven months?
The reason we thought it was installed was because we found a new design approval for the septic system on the DES website. And we went out there and looked, and you can see disturbance in the area where it was approved to be installed.
We said, oh, here it is, right here, yeah, on the sidewalk.
So, one and one, in this case, didn't add up to two. The, we went back and we're trying to find the operational approval at DES, weren't able to find that, which made us call the design, their septic designer, and he said, no, 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 it was never installed, it was designed, never got installed.
Yeah, I mean, the, the land was disturbed too, in that area, but-
Yeah, it was.
That's weird.
Because we also walked where another second was, field was proposed, it's going to be proposed at that time.
Yeah, there was a second field proposed.
They probably dug some test pits though, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, it, it looked a little bit more disturbed than test pits, but, I mean-
It was a 40 by about 30 area which disturbed.
Yeah.
It was, you know, test pits are usually, um-
Right.
Guy or not, you know, like, and round.
Right.
Not usually a big rectangle, so. But we don't know, you know, the current owner was not involved, and we don't know what, what happened. The vegetation, you know, grown in long enough to, to, you know, it was before they purchased the property.
So I understand now too, that the proposal is to, rather than, than flipping the large building, it'll be removed and all new construction for those three units?
I'm not sure I heard that right, but we're installing a new septic system for all four units.
Yes.
Yes, and a new well for all four units.
I'm talking about the, the, I was shifting gears on you. Units two, three, and four are going to be all new construction?
They're going to be in the footprint of the building that is there currently.
Yes, yes.
We're just, we're going to take it up another story.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, you're adding a second story, or is it an all-new building?
No, adding a second story.
So it's not an all-new building?
So the buildings are going to remain, basically, but a second story is going to-
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right, that's what I understood before, yeah, all right, yep. Other questions?
Last time we looked at this plan, we had asked about what was happening in the limited common area for units two, three, and four, those fenced-in yards. Is that, has that been determined? Is that going to be grass?
So he has no intent to, to do anything for it, you know, prior to selling it or somebody renting it. But we did add note number 15, that indicates the, the maximum hardscaping, that if they decide to go with hardscaping, that could be in that area, which would be 400 square feet.
Okay.
We also indicate that, you know, four has to be limited to porous applications as well, so, because they are in the, in the buffer.
Thank you. I had one other question about the limit of grading for the proposed septic leach field. It looks like the grading contour, the new contours are within five feet of the property line. And that usually triggers a waiver, does it not?
It does.
We can look at that, I believe we can pull that back to make it-
It looks like you probably could, yeah.
Yeah, I see, yep.
It does look like you'll be clearing some woodland there though? Is that the tree line?
Correct.
That goes? So do you have a sense of like how, what the woodland is like there?
I can't really recall from the, from the sidewalk, I mean, it's, it's a good stand of vegetation along that edge. I don't think it'll be disturbed sufficiently to remove the screen, if that's what you're asking, because I, I think it, it was a really, a good stand of trees between the two units, two houses.
So do we know if they're large enough that they need to be marked? Are they over 20 inches? If so, they need to be marked?
Don't know.
We did locate the ones that, I would say that they are not over 20 inches, because we did locate the ones that we thought were. But we can confirm that.
If the septic, septic and leach field is in a new location, I'm just wondering if, because that wasn't initially an area that you thought would be disturbed, where you might not have noted the larger trees, so if you could check it, that would be-
Most of it is in the yard there.
Okay.
We do bump out with our grading into, or we show the tree line, but that could be the canopy line as well.
Okay.
There is a tree shown near the septic, which would have been affected by the previously proposed second septic, so that's not being disturbed at this point. I mean, it's kind of fairly open yard, sliding down as you can see, all surrounded by vegetation. Where is it the fence will be? Oh, I see it now.
It's on the south end.
Yeah, let's see, south, it'll be down here. Okay, yep.
Yeah, there are trees along that edge, but they, it wasn't, definitely wasn't as screened as the northern edge.
Yeah. Well, fencing doesn't necessarily require removal of trees.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I had read somewhere, but I can't locate it, as to what, would the existing well is to be abandoned, the well itself, but then there are usually pipes and various other things leading from a well to disperse the water. And is that addressed somewhere? I just can't, did they agree to remove all of that?
No, we'll, we'll leave them in place.
To leave it in place, okay, then.
That, well, that's shown there where the water line going to the dwelling.
Right.
Oh, and there's a, oh, no, okay, yep. That's existing. Am I right there?
And that's going to, he just said that's going to stay.
Yeah, that'll stay right there, yep.
The, where's the existing well?
I can point it out on the plan here. So the existing well is out here in the wetland area.
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, X well, okay.
The-
So now we're moving it in closer to the buildings?
Correct, will be outside of the wetland with the new well and the new piping.
And the, I'm sorry I missed the first meeting, but the, is there something wrong with that well?
We don't, we're not, there's nothing wrong with the well, we're just not certain that it could support the, all four units, so he's going to drill a new one.
Okay. And the new ones potentially closer to it, if there is some kind of contamination to the building?
Correct. But we're not, we're not assuming that there's contamination.
And none of, none of the pipes that currently exist would be reused, just-
Correct, we-
Picking them up from the new well?
Will go from the existing well to the utility room on the back of the three-unit building.
Yeah.
And then from there over to the existing house, and the utility room will pipe right
So you do some tests on the existing well, and it's okay, you may not drill the new well?
He's planning to drill a new well.
Notwithstanding the condition of the existing well.
Correct.
Yeah, you could possibly find that the water in that well is fine.
Potentially, he still have to reroute, reroute the, the lines. So I think his, his thought was to, you know, not take a chance of that one failing in three years, just install a new well, new casings under the new regulations with a
In only four units, the protective radius around that well is-
125 feet.
And that's, the buildings aren't within, it can be within that 125?
Correct.
Not the leach field, no, recently? Or the property line?
Okay, thank you.
What?
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? The common space, limited common space for unit one, it's labeled, has a two in it, what, what is that? It's a square down by the, just south of the parking area?
That's an existing garage.
Oh, that's a garage.
That's, that will stay and will be-
Oh, I see.
Four unit, whichever, unit one.
I see, I didn't see, I had my finger over that existing garage, I didn't see that.
Fat fingers, my goodness.
And I'm just curious, the enclosed dumpster pad, was that located? Was there one there before, a pad for that?
That was one of the questions from the DPW that we responded to, we added that.
Is that going to be, is that going to be easy for a truck to get in too? It seems like it might be easier to have it on the other, on the east side of the parking, where you have a arrow saying guest parking? I don't know, it just seems awkward to have a truck going in, backing in.
Well, I mean, they do it in our office every, you know, every week.
Okay.
So, yeah, and-
Sort of remote.
Obviously, nobody wants the dumpster in their front yard.
No, no, well, it, it kind of is.
Number four might have something to say.
I have a question about utilities, so, um-
Yes, go ahead, Jen.
You're showing the, I see two gas tanks that services all four units, is that right?
The three units, and there's a gas tank behind unit one as well, there'll be a gas tank there as well.
Okay. And then what about, is there going to be HVAC for these units?
Those will be either right outside of the utility room, or right on, you know, on the roof, you know, they're trying to figure out exactly how they're going to do that right now.
Okay.
So will those be those individual units?
Correct.
And what, what purpose is the, I'll call it propane tank for?
For heat.
For heat?
And hot water.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the last time we looked at this, it was like October, and I'm not remembering it totally clearly, but I remember there was a very long conversation about the, that one of these units must always be owner occupied, that stipulation, and I'm just wondering if everyone, did we, where did we land on that, and if everyone's comfortable with where we landed on that? It's a good question.
If I may, I think that's, that was a requirement by the ZBA, so that was a condition of approval.
Well, and it's part of our recs.
Right.
It's, it's in our zoning, so it's really not a matter for the planning board. I think what Aaron brought up was, he thought it was silly to do, I think that's, might have been his words, to, to, you know, in a condominium, to, to have that restriction, but that's what the ordinance says, and I think he was talking about it, maybe we could change that, but not, you can't change it on this application, it would need to be a zoning amendment separate from this.
Okay, thank you for refreshing my memory on that, I couldn't remember where-
So what does the zoning say, like a certain percent?
Well, residential conversions such as this, because this is a single-family zoning district, you know, so multi-family's not, technically not allowed, but what is allowed is residential conversions of an existing structure into, up to four units, based on if they have the, you know, the land area to do so. And this does, and it can convert the existing structures, in this case, multiple structures, to the four units, but one of the requirements in the ordinance to allow you to do that, one unit must remain owner occupied.
Only if the units are all to become rental units. So if they're owner occupied, then it doesn't matter?
No, technically what it says is you can't have four condos, someone owns the whole condo and rents them all out, and there's no owner there. The owner of the condos, or two people are all four rented at the same time.
Yeah.
The enforcement of that is prob, well, first, the likelihood of that is almost nil, because it's a condominium type, you know, ownership, and you're going to have multiple owners, but in the event it happens, then I, I don't know, you know, I mean, it would be up to be, it would be up to the code enforcement officer to, to, to enforce.
And they would never know unless there was a complaint or something?
Yeah, and so, yeah, it would be complaint driven if someone complained saying, you know, everyone's renting in there, and they did some research, they would determine how to enforce that at that time, so. Not, not really a purview for, you know-
We wouldn't be-
I don't think for us.
It's a little bit beyond what we-
It could be ugly.
Except to change the, the ordinance and possible make amendments, but that's not, but that's not here.
Not tonight.
That's not today, that's not on this applicant.
Another conversation, another meeting, yep.
Yep.
This is, it is what it is day. Something else, Ben?
No, I'm just-
Nancy, you have any comments or questions?
I'm-
You're willing to speak, you know?
I know, I always like the voting members to ask their questions first, and then if mine's not covered, I ask. Snow removal, I'm not finding where the snow removal is, I'm sure it's right in front of me, but can someone please help me find where your-
I don't see it either.
Okay.
We don't show the location.
Because it's snow to be stored at edge of pavement.
There you go.
But, I'm sorry, can you-
No, that's what, that's, we don't show the snow storage.
So wherever it's going to end up, it's just going to be at the edge of any pavement?
At, on our pavement, on our, on this applicant's property.
This is a thoughtful committee tonight.
Actually, I do have one more, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I do have one more, just to make sure I understand, because of the concern on the sidewalk, the unofficial sidewalk, so now we know the leach field's never put in there. Do they have to get a new approval? Because number seven, still, let me get there, sorry. Number seven on the November 30th letter says, there is an existing septic approval from January, so that approval still valid?
They still have an approval that is valid, that could be installed. We're not proposing to install that one, we're going to go on our plan where we show the proposed septic being located.
Is that written anywhere?
So, we will, we have, what's, I'm sorry.
Is that written anywhere? I'm only seeing that it says there's an existing, existing approval, so.
It's on the plans.
It is on the plan.
Right.
That's what, well, it doesn't, it's, this is what they're proposing for a septic.
Okay.
And it's not near the old-
So because the existing septic approval is in a specific area, you're moving the area, so you have to get a new one?
Correct, yeah.
New-
If you changed anything about the septic approval, we would have to get a new one.
Absolutely, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
So, just FYI, the old one didn't cover our four units anyway, so we would have had to do something in addition to.
Okay.
But we're just, yeah, moving it.
Yes, thank you. I'm done with my questions now.
And on that septic design, are you using any advanced system designs to address any potential nitrogen? Or are you just doing conventional septic?
There's something here, and I just can't get my finger on it, there's something niggling in the back of my mind about this one, and I just can't quite figure out what it is, but it's just something there that's troubling me, but I can't-
Well, I think part of it may be the question as to whether the old dry cleaning was performed there, and if there's any-
Well, but that's, that's, that's okay, I think we have to specifically address that one, I'm just trying to say there's something in the back of my-
Something else back here, okay.
-mind that I just can't bring forward, and I promise you, I won't call you tonight if I remember it.
Thank you.
But it, it, there's just something, and I can't, I can't, I don't know whether it troubles me, or, but it's just something here that, that's not quite ringing totally resonant. Don't ask me what it is, and I'll just withdraw the comment, but it's, I was hoping somebody else could pick up. But you need, we do need to address that, at least the others.
I, I did have a question that I was trying to remember, that just came back in this conversation, about the new septic system. Dave, we had talked about how close that is to the river, not how, that one is closer than the one that we were talking about earlier. And we had a discussion about potential seeping pollutants into the river from 300 feet back or 600 feet back from the river?
Well, I think it's more of a general question, it's-
Yeah, okay.
Septic issues, you know, septic systems, conventional septic systems, you know, input nitrogen into the, into the ground.
Yeah.
And that leaches into, you know, wetland resources, you know, Swampscut River, great bit, identified by, you know, a lot of people that, that is an issue. And we have just recently, you know, are asked to do a nitrogen general permit through EPA, the town. And in our CIP, that you notice that we're, you know, starting to budget a lot of money to address nitrogen issues. And, you know, I haven't done the math on this, but, you know, you know, how much, how many pounds of nitrogen this is going to input into our, you know, into our environment, and we're going to be, the town's going to be responsible to, you know, meet certain requirements of testing in the rivers and so forth, that we have to mitigate and reduce that nitrogen loading. And any opportunity we get to, you know, remove it before it gets in there is a good idea, that's why we talked about there's advanced septic systems now that do a better job, you know, and, and input less nitrogen into the system. But they're more expensive, so people don't want to do them, but then the question becomes, well, is it, is it the town that's going to pay for this removal? You know, there's some estimates out there, some education is, is real cheap, some mitigation is super expensive per pound, and, you know, say, I've heard quotes of- and, you know, say, I've heard quotes of average 3,000 a pound per nitrogen, so if this, you know, inputs, you know, 20 pounds a year, that's, you know, someone's gonna have to mitigate this if it, you know, keeps going. So any chance we can get to reduce nitrogen from it, reduce the nitrogen loading of our environment, I think is beneficial for the town because of this new nitrogen general permit. It's kind of analogous to the stormwater permit, you know? Like, that's why we, then we pass it on to regulate, and I would definitely suggest moving forward, we start requiring these systems, uh, or consider requiring these systems, uh, because, you know, the, anything that meets certain nitrogen loading thresholds, because someone's gonna pay. Someone's gonna pay for it down the road, and it's just a matter of who, uh, so, in my opinion.
So why don't we require it?
Because this is just kind of a new thing, we just, we just filed for that permit, I think, a couple months ago, and, you know, and it just showed up in the CIP this year, uh, so it's kind of a new thing that's coming down the pipe, just like, you know, stormwater years back, it's like, okay, we're gonna start testing outfalls, we're gonna start requiring, you know, you're an MS4 community, and you have to meet certain things and do certain things. Now the same thing is happening with, uh, with nitrogen loading.
Because it certainly doesn't seem like the rest of the residents of the town should have to contribute to that, you know? If, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I, there's nothing, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to find out, you know, the, what the plan, I mean, I would feel much more comfortable if your regs, you know, were required, it's like, you know, you just required them, so it's fair to everyone. Um, requirement on a case-by-case basis, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, if you can do that or not.
Probably, I would doubt you could, but it should be, there should be some standard set up, I would think.
But I brought it up to ask the applicant, because some people were like, okay, you know, makes sense, thing, thing, you know, and then we'll do it, you know, um, so it was worth the question.
Yep.
And I asked it, and I, we got the answer.
So I, I'm bringing it up again for that conversation, because it's gonna be coming up sometime.
I hope so.
Yeah, but it, doing it on a case-by-case basis is troubling. I think we need to, if we're gonna go that way, we need to have it universal.
Yes.
Rather than trying to, trying to figure out, okay, A does this, and then B, and then C.
That's not the right way to go, you know?
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, anything within so many feet has to do this.
I mean, ideally you wanna encourage development where, you know, utilities, you know, public sewer exists, but, um, if it doesn't, and you have to put in a septic system, yeah, you should probably require the most efficient system, because it just benefits everyone, future owners, everybody, the town.
Or maybe it forces this applicant to move that towards the back of the property. Maybe it forces this applicant to move that leach field to the back of the property.
Well, they did move it away, it's, you know, uh, they kept, it did shift, because it was closer.
You want it further from the wetland.
Well, the wetland's over here, isn't it?
No.
Well, the river's over here, I'm sorry, the wetland's there, you're right.
But I think the point remains, we should, I mean, my opinion, I don't know the answer to about, you know, case-by-case, but I agree with Pete, and I would just assume, you know, have that discussion, just like the condominium owner occupied, kind of, as a separate matter to, you know, to address it on a larger scale.
Yep. Okay.
Would that be a zoning site plan, or is, where would that fall?
I haven't done that research to get that far, but it would be an ordinance, yeah, it would be in the site stands. I mean, wherever, probably zoning, you know, if I...
Say site plan, we could act on that pretty quickly.
Well, they would stormwater amend it somewhere.
Yeah, you could do that in the interim, I'll do that research, I mean, that has been on my mind to do that, um, um, but, because nothing's pending, nothing's in the pipeline right now, you know, we don't get a lot of these, um, so, but we'll, we'll definitely, you know, move it forward, you know, as soon as we can.
So has this septic system been engineered?
It has.
Okay. So it's more than just lines on the paper?
It is.
Yep. Okay. Well, shall we address the dry cleaning question? And, uh...
Yes.
Dave, you had said something earlier about an opinion from Attorney Mitchell.
Yeah, because the applicant, you know, we spoke earlier, and I, you know, I kinda came to the, he sent me an email saying, you know, they didn't, the applicant felt it wasn't within the purview of the planning board, and I, I really didn't, I said, I'm gonna leave it up to the planning board to decide, but that's a good point, you know, I mean, and I, and I reached out to the Mitchell group, uh, and if you wanted to, um... You wanted to know that opinion, I would suggest going and voting to go into non-public, and I can provide it to you, and then we can reconvene back to the regular meeting once that's discussed.
But I guess that's only if you're planning to vote and require a Phase 1, which I would urge you not to. Um, I've been doing this for 20-plus years, and I've never seen a planning board require a Phase 1 on any project. It opens a can of worms that, um, as Dave indicated, it is the initial step in, you know, determining if there's anything there, so what happens if they do find something? Then you go to a Phase 1B, then what happens, who, who's gonna regulate that? I mean, there is state reg requirements for these, so if the applicant who purchased this property didn't believe he needed a Phase 1, which is, that's typically when these are conducted during the sale of the property. If you're buying the property and you believe there may be issue, you have a Phase 1 completed. He didn't believe it needed to be completed at that time, he still doesn't believe that it needs to be completed, so he has not completed one. So, it would be, you know, on the next purchaser, if they wanted to do it, they can have a Phase 1 completed.
And by no means was I indicating that the board by going into non-public was going to require it. I was simply saying going into non-public to hear the legal opinion, whether the board can or not. So, that's, just to make that clear, that was, I wasn't saying that.
Well, if we're seriously considering a Phase 1, then I think we need to know what Town Council has advised.
Okay.
So that's the first, first, to me, threshold. If we're not gonna consider talking about or requiring a Phase 1, then we don't need to go back into a non-public session. If, in fact, the dry cleaning establishment was strictly a pickup, and there was no...
Drop-off pickup.
It was drop-off pickup, and there was no active use of any cleaning materials.
Chemicals.
Chemicals, then, but we don't know that.
Right.
And that, there's the quandary, it seems to me, because...
And it, and it does seem an odd location for pickup and drop-off, only...
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of really bad stuff that goes on in the cleaning.
You're right.
Um, and...
And you're moving the well closer?
I... I think I'd like to know what Town, how Town Council advises.
Okay.
So therefore, I think I would move that we go into non-public session to determine that, I'm sorry.
Have I got that motion, Dave?
Yeah, you moved to go into non-public session, you have to state the reason, which I will look up here.
Oh, thank you, he's gonna give me again the motion.
What we do with that one? Are you comfortable with that one?
I would have to write something.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, it would move, you would move to go into non-public session under NHRS A91A: colon 3, Roman numeral 2, dot L., which is consideration of legal advice, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Could I, um, ask if we can...
Sure.
Because we have another, um, case that should be easy to deal with. Can we recess this hearing and go into non-public after that?
I suppose so.
You can do what you choose, there is a motion.
But we got a motion on the floor right now, so...
Withdraw your...
Well, I can draw, I'll withdraw the motion, because I think, Molly, that may be...
Yeah, if we can... Okay, withdraw the motion?
Yeah.
Is that...
So... We'd never kill it.
Is that fair?
Nobody seconded it, I don't think.
Right.
Well, I'm just asking.
No, no, no.
I know, I just wonder if it's fair for the applicant to be put... I appreciate that someone's waiting, but I also, he's got his feet in the ground and ready to continue forward, and it would be nice to...
If the board is gonna adjourn to, to go into non-public session, then I don't have a problem. I've been in his seat before as well.
I just, I have a feeling we're gonna be long, no matter what, and we might as well have one person waiting rather than two. Thank you.
Any objections on the part of the board, no? Okay, so, what do I do, Dave, declare a recess?
I don't know, you've, you've never, you know, stopped an application to take another application, usually continue or table it, but now you're not...
Well, can we, can we table it for a second?
I don't think you need to vote on anything, that's what I recommend, just take his, say, move to that, and then come back to, to that, I don't think there's any...
If the applicant is willing to, uh, go along with that, which I think that's...
Sounded like he said...
Yeah, if to table it until after your...
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, we...
Look it back.
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay.
I just know how short, I think this is gonna be the select board's...
The clock is ticking.
Okay, I know.
Okay, and this is, uh... This is Ben and Sarah Anderson, 66 Newfield Road, tax map parcel number 25, 24-29, consideration of planning board recommendation for granting, granting of site easement. And, uh, we have that information in our packet. Somewhere. Here we are. And Dave, you have a little write-up on it?
I do, as you said, they're seeking an easement, what it, what it boils down to is they're seeking an easement because they're gonna, they're trying to secure a driveway permit, and they need the site distance, um, but in order to get the site distance, they need a site easement to keep some vegetation clear, so they have the adequate site distance for the DOT to, uh, provide a driveway permit for the use. So now, when they, once they need a site easement, it triggers NRS A4114A, which requires any, you know, kind of granting of an interest of town property, which this is, we own it, we're granting, we're taking those bundle of sticks, and one of the rights that we have, we're taking and giving to someone else. Before you do that, it needs Conservation Commission and Planning Board review and recommendation prior to the select board taking action. They appeared before the select board and the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, uh, did support the request, it is the subject of Rank Rains, you know, Rains Farms there, Rains Farms there, and, uh, they did support the request, they went to the select board on November 22nd, who also seemed to indicate to support the request, but didn't vote to grant it, because NRS A4114A requires the planning board and the Concom to review it. So that's why we're here, for the planning board, uh, to review it. If you, I did, um, provide a recommended motion, and there's a letter of explanation in the applicant's here in case you have any questions.
Thank you. Floor is yours, sir, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, well, thank you, Dave, that was a great summary, uh, and I think you did a beautiful job as it is, and I won't use up any more of your time, uh, only to, to reiterate what Dave said, that the Conservation Committee, Commission, which is charged and stewards of that land, did support it in about 7 to 0. DPW has took a look at it there in favor of it as well, and the select board seemingly did support it as well, but as Dave said, we were required to come back to present it in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to it. It is a very tiny portion of, uh, uh, land, it's almost splitting hairs with the, the DOT right-of-way, but the, the right-of-way does follow the old stone wall, which does get narrow in that area, which keeps it, uh, you know, one foot in either direction, is the question, so DOT just wanted to make sure that it's secured, that it would always be kept clear for, for site viewing. The only last thing that I would include is that not only does it help, uh, with that driveway, but it also helps with the public, uh, traveling along that roadway as well, helping them to navigate that corner as well.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Did Town Council review this easement?
Yes.
It did, okay. Uh, that part, I, I remember Russ, I watched the select board meetings, I've watched the Conservation Commission meetings, and that was the one thing about drafting the easement.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think the only reason we're here is because I don't know that anybody's done a site easement before, and so there was some confusion over...
Yeah, that was clear too.
Over what's the process one?
Even Russ has said this was his first one, so I just wanted to make sure it was, it was the by...
First time for everything.
That's right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, everybody else go.
Your turn.
What standards are we using here? What, what's the criteria that we're gonna base our decision on? I looked and tried to figure out where it is, I mean, is this just a, is this just a gut reaction? What is, what's the basis here, because, I mean, I know that's a terrible question to ask.
It's under other.
Well, yeah, but I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that...
I've done it before.
And I'm, try, as I say, I'm trying to figure out what it is, what, because normally when we do something, we say we've reviewed such and such and such and such, and are satisfied it's been met. Well, I don't know what it is we're reviewing to begin with, and secondly, I don't know how we meet it, other than we think it's a good idea, and that's, well, I mean, that's...
There is no standard, there is no criteria in the state law, but I would suggest it's, you know, it is up to the discretion, ultimately, the select board, whatever you recommend, but it's more apply common sense, and, and you're here as a board to protect the, you know, public self, healthy, uh, public health, safety, and welfare of the town, and if you think anything by granting this easement would be contrary to the public's interest and do harm to the general public, then you probably should voice that. That's probably, you know, I mean, it's close, but it just sounds broad, I know, Peter, but it's more, just use your intuition, really.
Okay, so basically, we don't have any...
No, there is no set criteria to use.
Okay, then, then what we're doing is we're flying, not necessarily blind, but we are, we have no, no... And whenever you do something, this is the first time, then you set something.
Yes, yeah.
And if we don't, if we don't set anything, then that's probably the best thing to do, but I, again, I just wanted the board to know that at least one member had some concern as to what, how we judge this. And yes, the pictures, uh, depict what needs to get done.
Right.
And it's, this is almost like speaking against motherhood on my part, but nonetheless, I still wanted the board to be aware. And having said all of that, um, I'm prepared to move we go forward.
Okay, I'm listening, I'm listening.
I'm gonna let David...
Here, you'll have to read it this time.
Well, no, 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 but I just, just, I just wanted the board to know of that concern of mine.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to rush through that, but I mean, I'm willing to make a, I move, I'll be willing to move that the request of Ben and Sarah Anderson for a letter of recommendation, and I'm not quite sure what this letter of recommendation says, because I don't like necessarily saying, all right, we'll do something without knowing what it is we're doing. In a letter of recommendation, what is, what's the form?
You're recommending the site easement.
Okay, and that's very simple.
You're recommending to the select board to grant the site easement.
Okay, and, and no one had, none on the board has any problem with that particular way of wording, okay?
On this board or on the select?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's this board.
I'll make the motion and find out, I guess.
Okay, but I, I, as far as, uh, for a letter of recommendation in accordance with, uh, HR RSA 41-14, dash, little a, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any other discretion, questions? And let's do hand vote, so I'll start with Jen.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Pete?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Amazing, it's that common sense can prevail once and for all.
Well, it'd be interesting, some of, you know, credits us with common sense.
Which maybe that's a little... All right, so back to the...
Motion to go into non-public, if you'd like.
Yes, please, I'll so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Jen, it's been moved and seconded, so, uh, let's do a voice vote on this one, those in favor, please, in...
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Worship, whoops.
I don't think we'll be very long.
Okay. 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 (Music) 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 (Music)
Hey.
Eight, eight eleven?
It is, or eight twelve.
Oh, eight twelve.
So, we're, we are back on the, on the case.
It's packing already here, basically.
If I could just make one more...
ZV Investments LLC, planning board case twenty dash ten, twenty-one dash ten.
If I could just make one more argument to the board regarding this issue.
Sure.
The board is allowed to require studies, additional studies, to help them assist in making a decision whether the project meets the town regulations. That's the point of the studies. Traffic study to see if the roads are, have the capacity to pass the proposed traffic. In this case, you have to think, what, what would the report provide the board that would help you in either denying or approving this project? If it came back and said something was there, is the board gonna deny that project and then nothing's gonna happen on the site, so it wouldn't get cleaned up? So, that, that's my argument, is, it's really up to the owners, they are complying with the regulations. They don't have any intention to store, produce, or create hazardous waste on the site, which is what your regulations require.
Yep.
So, we believe we meet the requirements of it, and the phase one is just addition, additional expense to the client. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Oh, excuse me. I need a motion to seal the minutes. He made one. He made one.
You should make it in public session, though. I was gonna say that.
How do we seal the...
And I need a second.
You should just do that in public.
Seconded, and those in, in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries. Excuse me for the interruption. Now, back to the discussion we're having.
I mean, I, I really appreciate the applicant's position that, you know, this is, there's definitely no intention of harming the public in any way, or store bringing hazardous materials to the site, but unfortunately, I mean, if, if we knew that this was, that the dry cleaner was just a storefront and was just, you know, taking the clothes, shipping them off-site to be cleaned, bringing them back and then giving them back to the customer, I don't think that there would be a concern, but we just don't know that. It seems like just finding out that information is important, and it seems like the way to do that is the phase one A report, in order to just, you know, make sure that this well is not gonna be contaminated with chemicals.
If I may?
Yes.
They are gonna have to test the well when they drill the well, they're gonna have to test the water for the people that are living there. And again, would the, if, if it comes back and it says that there is something, or is the board gonna deny the application? And under what, under what ordinance do we fail? What part of the ordinance?
I guess my question, though, is...
There, there is a requirement in our regs to, that they have to provide potable water to, to, you know, any residence, so, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get caught up on finding that. I, I would take one step at a time, figure out if you want it.
It'll have to be ten.
If you want to request it, if it's a reasonable request, and if so, why do you want it?
And what answer are you looking for, I guess, too?
An answer to what?
Well, when you do a study, you have a question that you're trying to answer. Drainage study, does it meet the requirements the town has for stormwater? Traffic study, what is the total amount of traffic you're producing, and is the, are the, is the road system sufficient for that? Phase one A, what's, what's the question? Has there ever been anything environmentally sensitive on the site? Is that the question? Is there ever anything now? What, what's the question?
I think the question relates to the safety of the, the future occupants of the property.
I mean, specifically, when we complete the phase one A, we have to have a question. We, because we're trying to answer the question, so what's the question?
Then we would be looking for a safe situation, so if you're asking for the question, question to see that the site is safe, the soil is safe, and it can be built on. If that's not, then corrections will have to be made, just like repairing the highway or changing the water lines, in order to correct the problem. I think that's the answer to it.
I think the question, yeah, and I think Jen makes in talking with her, her question was, is there any contamination on the site that should be remediated before introducing three additional...
Yeah.
...property owners, families to the site.
Yes.
I think that's what her question was when she brought it up.
Just curious, has the original well been tested recently?
No, it has not.
So, he bought the property, didn't test it, and hasn't tested it since, just out of curiosity?
Correct, he has not tested it.
Although the analogy I'm going to suggest is not a good one, but, one of my former employers had a, had an issue in Nashua, with some PCBs that were, that PSN H knew nothing about at the time that the particular site was discovered. Yet we were, or PSN H was responsible, responsible for that. Now, that's not, that's not a good analogy, but nonetheless, there's no, here, we don't know of what is there or what isn't there. It's more, is there, is there a reasonable possibility that there might be something there? Now, if we knew that the cleaners were strictly a pick-off and drop-off, or...
Pick-up.
Whatever it was, not, and there was nothing, no dry cleaning going on-site, then I think the, then the question is, is simply answered. We don't need to go to the, to number one. Is there, is there any reasonable possibility that something is there? And frankly, I suspect there's a very slim possibility, if not almost no possibility. But on the other hand, I think we have a duty at least to discuss among ourselves whether, in fact, we think something, there's sufficient there that we need to have some, some... I need a good feeling. And maybe I've overstated that, but it nonetheless is, is a, is these, the chemicals employed for dry cleaning are somewhat toxic, that's not quite the right word, but they, they do create significant problems. And, as I say, I think I've said enough here already. I was not saying I'm necessarily in favor of step one, but I at least want the six of us, or seven of us here, to convince ourselves that step one, that we don't believe step one is necessary. And that's, that's, each one of us is gonna have to come up with that answer, I believe.
I don't think I would feel comfortable walking out of this room tonight, making an assumption that there wasn't an actual cleaning process being done on that site. I don't have anything to go by that would indicate that it was or wasn't there, but to jeopardize, jeopardize the health and well-being of future residents, I'm not willing to, I don't feel comfortable taking that chance. I feel that, I, I would want to know for certain that there isn't something lurking under the, in the soils that could potentially harm people. And I, I wish there was a way that, reach out to somebody who would know.
There is no way for us to determine what this actual business was? In other words, this is just something that we can't get a handle on? Yes, Nancy does remember it.
John may remember. No, no.
But, but what I'm saying is that, that, I think if you asked ninety percent of the people at Exeter who, who were even around, that that, they would say that's a pick-off and a...
Pick-up.
Pick-up and drop-off.
I'm sure you could find out that information.
Well, the applicant should find out that information, if he wants to avoid...
Yeah, they didn't know.
Yeah, but it seems like it'll...
Did you, well, what extent of research did you do to determine if it was an actual dry cleaner that, dry cleaned on-site, or was it pick-up and drop-off?
The applicant didn't know it was a dry cleaner until he was informed by the town. So, we asked, he asked the, the seller, and they didn't know. So, that was the extent.
Oh, that was it?
That was it.
Okay.
So, my, my question might be, would the, would the board be comfortable if we could have, what's the right word? Evidence, proof, documentation of what the activities were when that was a dry cleaning establishment? Was it drop-off, pick-up, or...
I would feel a lot better.
Was it what they call a plant?
And there has to be some way that this is, can be determined.
Oh, I would imagine.
And so, the la, the previous owner didn't know either? You're saying, so he, he wasn't the one in the dry cleaning business?
No, this has been multiple uses since the dry cleaners. The dry cleaners, I believe, was in the seventies, maybe the eighties. I mean, it's been a church, that building was a church with a daycare.
Yep.
You know, they had a daycare in there, so...
Yep.
But they weren't building anything new, they used existing, so this issue hasn't come up?
Well, it was, it was a change of use, so I'm assuming they had to come back to the board for a change of use, if it was during the...
That board just didn't think to ask the question, maybe?
I guess it's possible.
Yeah, and residence, different thing, you're twenty-four-seven, you're there all the time, different people come and go with commercial uses, it's a little bit different of use. I'm not saying, I, I don't even know if they did go for a change of use in the past, I have no idea. But this is good, we can find out all that information at the board, you know? I mean, we can, we can find out.
I would think that if you went to Burnham's Dry Cleaners, who's been there for a long time, I mean, somebody in the business, I would think would know who operate a dry cleaner...
I think it's a sun runs that business.
Four miles away, and they've been there forever, so I would guess that, you know, if, if we're comfortable with an opinion from another business owner...
We've got to start somewhere.
But it's a start, maybe, and...
An opinion from the...
So, what I'm hearing is if, if it was actual dry cleaning processes on-site, the board would like to discuss that further. If it wasn't, and it was a pick-up and drop-off only, this situation, the planning board's okay with just moving forward, and okay, that's fine. No further discussion is warranted, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Or maybe, or maybe we just require the well to be tested, peace of mind.
I mean, I, in fairness, I mean, I've dealt, I've dealt with a dry cleaning site, you don't know where things can migrate to, I mean, or where they are, or, you know, what's going on under there, and they could very well not contaminate the water, and ten years from now, they contaminate the water. I mean, it depends, you know, it all depends on soil conditions and geological, you know, situation underneath about where they migrate to. So, I don't think testing the well, I think that's a good idea, but not necessarily is gonna tell you definitively one way or another.
Then it will never happen, right?
You won't find...
But it would give you a little peace of mind.
It would give you a little, and the current...
The well's been there a long time, and it's been many years since, if that activity did take place, it's been a long time since it did, so you would think maybe it would have migrated by now.
Or it could be just trapped in a, in a certain area.
Could be.
I mean, we had some wells that we tracked, and it didn't really move much in the location I was familiar with, because it was bedrock and it just kinda stayed there. You know, levels slowly went down over time, but they, they didn't really migrate much. But that's not to say it's a different situation, so it can be completely different, it depends on what's going on, on that particular site.
So, what I think I hear, here, is we should table to a certain date and ask the applicant to work on finding documentation, answers to what took place.
And it's pretty convenient, too, because this research shouldn't take too long, and there is a meeting that we didn't have anything scheduled for December sixteenth because of the holiday, so a week from tonight.
Oh, that's right.
But we're not meeting on the MMH DC meeting that night, too. That's a lot of...
Did you wanna make the motion to meet on the twenty-third instead?
No, I just...
Full beer.
Well, do we need a motion then, at this point? Well, I'm trying to, would that be...
Well, okay, it doesn't sound like the board's in a position to act on the application. Am I correct on that?
I think we're gonna, we need to pay...
It doesn't seem like that's where this board's headed. They want...
More info.
You kinda want an information to, if it was a drop-off, and was there dry cleaning processes being conducted at the site? And if there was, then you're gonna discuss that at that time.
Right, but if there were none, then I think we dropped it, and we don't have to worry about it anymore.
Correct.
We need, we need to come...
So, so what you need to do before, because you have to continue it to a date cert.
Yes.
A date and time cert. And the next meeting that is scheduled is next, a week from tonight, at seven P M.
Then I would move to continue. Well, or we get into first meeting in January. What?
Well, that's an option, I, I mean, I don't know what the applicant's timeframe is, but I, I would think that we can find the answer out to that question within a week, that's why I'm...
I think, I think that seems fair.
And if, and if they don't have an answer, you let us know.
Yeah, I mean, waiting a month, I don't know if it's, you know, that's...
I just wanna make sure that the applicant's comfortable that they have the time, they need to do what we're looking for.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to find it.
A little due diligence on the... Yeah, it's a, it's a due diligence issue, it's a due diligence. So, you didn't make a motion to table till... I thought I made a motion to table until... December sixteenth?
December sixteenth at seven P M.
Whatever, whatever the date is, it's a week from today, so it's sixteen. At seven P M. At seven P M. Good, is there a second?
Sure.
John, thank you. Move them seconded, those in favor, please, if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, no noes? Thank you very much. Comfortable with that? Okay.
It should be simple. It should, you would think.
Move it right along. Other, other. Took care of Ben.
I find it strange that the guy...
Master plan discussion.
Yeah, why would you...
I don't have anything to report.
That's been on the shelf for a little while.
Don't you have done this before now?
Field modifications, Dave?
None, none that I'm aware of.
Bomb and, bomb and a level credit?
Nope, none requested.
Anything else for the, for the order?
Yeah, one thing, I just wanted FYI, the, the town did receive a citizens petition on December eighth regarding the definition of bed and breakfasts, to amend the definition.
Oh, yeah.
And we will schedule that, because I didn't know, I talked to Barb today, like, what's the, I, I hadn't gotten a zoning amendment, the citizens petition, yet, that I'm aware of, but she said it's been always past practice to schedule the public hearing for the board on them, so you can, you know, say your thoughts, and, and go from there. But my understanding of a citizens petition is, if it's a citizens petition, it's going on the warrant as it's written. So, I think it's more, I would guess, it's more from a recommendation for the planning board, because it always says underneath, you know, as recommended by the, or something to that effect.
A citizens petition does?
That's what I was told, I talked to Barb McAvoy today, because I have not, I was in a city prior to this, and then I didn't have, we haven't run into this, and she said there's been a handful of them since she's worked here. She said a handful, and this is what they do, so...
Yeah, no...
I just wanted FYI, I'll look into that further, but they're...
It was a question that actually came, I was thinking a lot about.
So, schedule a public hearing in January, so that's coming down the pike, just wanted FYI, young.
Oh, thank you. You just don't know.
That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels ninety-eight and twenty-two. Channel ninety-eight is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel twenty-two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by S A U sixteen and can be found on channel thirteen, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.